So now we're on to community choice aggregation, which is a big change to the way electricity is going to be supplied in the town of Brookline.
That is true. I'd like to introduce myself. I'm Maria Morelli. I am Senior Planner in the Department of Planning and Community Development. I have the good fortune of working with the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee on climate initiatives for the town of Brookline, and we are finally here to launch Brookline Green Electricity this summer. The purpose of this presentation is really to explain the program, its options. We had an opt-out letter that went out. We'll explain that. We'll describe our new supplier, and also the town's resources that are available to help consumers make the best decision. I really want to emphasize that we do have a really flexible program with lots of options for consumers, and we're making outreach really a priority during the opt-out period. Before I get started, I would like to introduce a few people who are with me this evening. Philip Carr is the Director of Business Development for the New England region for Good Energy. Good Energy is our aggregation consultant and energy expert. With him is Tom Michaelman, a Principal with Sustainable Energy Advisors, an invaluable asset regarding renewable energy. We also have Larry Creashen and Jaime Roldan from Mass Energy. Our new supplier, Dynage, will be purchasing renewable energy from local nonprofit Mass Energy. They are the gold standard for renewable energy, and I'd love to have Larry say a few words after I speak. I also want to acknowledge some remarkable citizens who have helped us design a program with not only representing the community, but offering the maximum range of options for the widest possible goals that consumers might have. We have Tommy Vitolo, Werner Lowey, who is the co-chair of the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee along with Selectmen Heller, David Lescoye, Mary Duert, and I think there's someone else. David Pantalone as well. If I missed anyone, please raise your hand. They've been remarkable and tireless to work with, and we owe them a great deal. So we have an ingenious little program that not only offers a wide range of choices for consumers, but it also is an opportunity to make a significant impact on reducing greenhouse gas emissions. I think you're going to find that Brookline is a climate action leader in Massachusetts. A lot of communities are going to be looking up to Brookline to see how we've used this ingenious mechanism to have a significant impact on our environment without making it inaccessible for people who want to have that impact to participate. Okay, so just a bit of a snapshot. This is a town-sponsored program, and this program uses bulk purchasing to offer rate stability and renewable energy options to residences and businesses. The Chestnut Hill residents, of course, have Chestnut Hill in their address, so they weren't picked up when there was a data transfer from Eversource to Dynage, and so they didn't get their opt-out letters. We're hoping they'll get them by mid-June. I'm not promising that, but we're working really hard. What will happen is that their opt-out period will be extended 30 days from the postmark on their letters. Okay, and also, Mr. Loschinsky is going to be sending a letter to the community also next week, and that's going to provide, again, that more personalized touch to really explain the program in detail, and really to show people that it is a town-sponsored program. And of course, we're going to, I'll be talking about the outreach sessions that we are going to be hosting. First, I talked about bulk purchasing. I know you know this, but for anyone who's listening and watching this via cable, community choice aggregation is actually a public policy. So bulk purchasing is similar to if you shop at Costco and you're buying things in bulk, you have a cheaper unit price. And that's really the whole idea behind this concept, actually this policy called community choice aggregation. The town has an opportunity to pool customers, residences, and businesses in order to obtain a competitive electricity supply rate. And that doesn't interfere with the utility service, so you're still going to get the quality service that you get from your current utility. This is about providing consumers with more choice. For some perspective, over 60 communities in Massachusetts and about 1,300 nationwide provide aggregation programs. Again, this state law has been around in Massachusetts for about 20 years, and as I've stated, we're actually adding a little twist to it. We were authorized by Town Meeting to provide 25% more renewable energy to the mix, and we can do this through an aggregation plan. This was a concept that was actually pioneered by the city of Melrose. Martha Grover is the energy manager there, who had this ingenious idea that if everyone in your customer base could buy a little bit more renewable energy, you'd have this measurable impact rather than having a few extreme outliers doing something extraordinary and fantastic. And it's really been a source of a case study, and more people are picking up on it. Town of Brookline is actually expanding on that, which I'll describe later. Although there are some administrative fees, the town receives no fees for providing this service. Just a little bit of a timeline of how we got here. So back in November 2015, Town Meeting passed both a warrant article authorizing the town to purchase electricity on behalf of residents and businesses, and also a resolution urging the Board of Selectmen to purchase 25% more electricity through an aggregation plan. Without wasting any time, in April 2016, we conducted a procurement for an aggregation consultant with our regional planning agency, NA PC, and the Board of Selectmen selected Good Energy. In early June, about a year ago, the Board of Selectmen did hold public hearings on the draft aggregation program, and then voted later that month to submit that aggregation plan to the Department of Public Utilities. DPU also held a public hearing on the town's aggregation plan. What they do is they do take their time. They actually took 10 months to vet our program with the sole, really, the primary purpose of protecting consumers' rights. So in April 2017, we finally got our approval from DPU, and in May 17, with Good Energy, we conducted a competitive bidding process for the electricity supplier. I just want to note, of the hundreds of electricity suppliers that do business in the state, only four really met our criteria for bidding. So it was a very rigorous process with high standards on behalf of consumers. Something that's really helpful, I have found, when I have given numerous presentations and talked to our constituents, is explaining something basic about our electric bill. And this is one, I think, one boon with this program. A lot of us, and this is nothing to be ashamed of, really don't know the components of our electric bill. We don't know where our electricity comes from. And one thing that's actually helpful for consumers to understand is that there's a difference between supply and delivery. You see those blue and green bars? Since deregulation about 20 years ago, consumers can shop for their own electricity suppliers. And if you've been getting inundated with solicitations from third-party suppliers, you know it's relentless. It's not easy to do the research and figure out which is the best value if you can trust that supplier. That's another advantage of this program. We're working with industry experts, and we spent a long time doing this, to actually vet the best possible supplier for the town and make sure that we were offering terms that would take advantage of the market. And that's really hard for individual consumers to do. One thing you'll see, so three indicates what supply is. Dynage will be supplying our electricity, but Eversource will continue to deliver the electricity. If you participate in the program, you'll see on your bill, you'll still get a bill from Eversource, still send payment to Eversource. That five shows where Dynage's contact information will show up. And if you look at that bar on the left, you might want to be aware of your electricity usage. A little bit more, one more thing about that bill. If you flip the bill over, again, you'll see the distinction between supplier and delivery. Okay, so that Benaraisian charge, that 600 kilowatts could be a typical household, what you're consuming a month. And one thing I wanted to point out, I actually forgot the dollar sign here, but that's representing Eversource's new rates for the six-month period, July 2017 through December 2017. If you're pulling your June bill, you're going to see old rates. What we've been noticing is Eversource has been changing. Their rates have been increasing every six months, and this 10.759 cents per kilowatt hour is the residential rate, and that's effective July 2017. Okay, another basic thing that I have found really helpful to establish first before I launch into the program options, where does our electricity come from? Most of it comes from, is produced by burning fossil fuels. That produces the pollution-causing greenhouse gases that contribute to climate change. Massachusetts, this is another little-known fact, but the state actually requires that 12% of all electricity supplied come from renewable resources like sun and wind power, and every year that requirement increases 1%. As you know, the town is authorized to purchase an additional 25% more from renewable resources, and this is, again, to reduce or decrease our reliance on fossil fuels. Okay, so finally, the choices we have in the program. We have, the name of the program is Brookline Green Electricity. We have three products in the program, and because the state actually requires an opt-out structure, we are automatically enrolling you in one of those products, and that's called Brookline Green. Recall that Town Meeting did authorize or did encourage the Board to purchase 25% more electricity, so we're just implementing here the will of Town Meeting by rolling people or enrolling people directly into Brookline Green. Now, here's where choice comes in. If you do nothing, you'll automatically be enrolled after the 30-day opt-out period, but during this period, you can actually decide if that's right for you. You might have reasons why you want to go with Brookline Basic, which doesn't add any additional renewable energy to the state's requirement, or you might be buying 100% of renewable energy now, and you want to continue doing that. So here we have a range. Let me just describe a little bit the distinction. First of all, really, the major trait amongst the three products is the amount of renewable energy. We do not have one product that is offering lesser service than another. It's not like gold, silver, and bronze. This is just, I like to call them small, medium, and large, just to give people an easy way to remember the amount of additional renewable energy. Okay, so that does affect the rate a little bit. Our basic rate is 10.398 cents per kilowatt hour. So right away, we're baiting Eversource's new prices effective July 2017, and that could result in savings for, again, that typical household using 600 kilowatt hours a month, to be about $25 a year. Might not sound like a lot, but keep in mind, we're not changing our rates every six months the way Eversource is. We have locked in that rate for a duration of, from the July 2017 meter read to the December 2019 meter read. It's about 30 months. And what that does is protects consumers against that market volatility, where you'll be, where you would be seeing otherwise changes every six months on your rate. We're protecting you from that. So the intention of this product is to provide savings over the contract term, and the action you'd need to take if you want to select this is to call Dynage directly. The other alternative product is Brookline All Green. This adds 100% additional renewable energy to the amount the state requires. So what I'm breaking down that rate, so you see that base price of 10.398 cents? The cost for the additional renewable energy for that product is 2.8 cents. Now, for those who are buying directly from Mass Energy, remember aggregation works for you too. So where you might be paying 3.8 cents by buying directly through Mass Energy, you're actually getting a cheaper rate through our program by one penny a kilowatt hour, which really does add up. Now, for the two products, Brookline Green and Brookline All Green, that provide additional renewable energy, tax deductions are available for the additional renewable energy costs, and that actually is attractive to a lot of people, which can help defray that additional cost. Just to give you some perspective about what these costs might look like, let's just use our typical household, using about 600 kilowatt hours per month. For Brookline Green, that could mean about $2 more a month over Eversource's basic service. And for Brookline All Green, again, that's going to be a bit more expensive. That's about $14 more a month. But keep in mind, that additional cost is defrayed by the tax deduction that is available. Now, the other option that I want to emphasize is you can keep your current electricity supplier. You do have to take an action. This is the state's mandate, not ours, and what you need to do is sign and return the opt-out form that was mailed to you, and do that within 30 days within, from the postmark on the opt-out notice. If you're in this program, you can opt out at any time, but keep in mind, if you opt out right away and then say, you know, I have buyer's remorse, I want to get back in, that rate cannot be guaranteed. So really, do take the time to learn about the program and see what's right for you and the benefits that the program offers. Okay, just to really sum up, what do you need to do? Don't throw away the opt-out notice. Don't ignore it. Read it. Decide what option is best for you. We have a range of consumer resources to help you make that decision, so I hope that you will call Dynage. Visit our website, BrooklineGreen.com. Call the Planning Department and make these resources available to you to help guide you. When you select your option, select, have your Eversource account number available. To make your selection, for Brookline Green, the 25%, you do nothing. You'll be automatically enrolled. For one of the two options, Brookline Basic or Brookline All Green, you call Dynage directly at the number given. And then to opt out of the program's three products altogether, again, you sign and return the opt-out form. So I just want to capture all of the benefits, because this really is a really rich program. Again, you have a choice of three products. It allows consumers to select the best plan to meet their needs. Prices are fixed for 30 months, protecting consumers from volatility. For our Chestnut Hill residents, that's going to be 29 months, ending on the same date. They'll just get started about a little bit later. Again, there is no change in the quality of electricity or customer service. If you're used to budget billing, which is to equalize your payments every month, you will retain that. In addition, if you are a budget plan or low-income delivery customer, you get to retain those benefits as well. You do not need to opt out to retain these benefits. Federal tax deductions are available for the additional renewable energy purchased. You can opt out at any time. There are no termination fees. Keep in mind, we've done a lot of heavy lifting with our experts. This is a rigorously vetted supplier, which I'll talk about in a little bit, and it's traditional, the traditional electricity is generated locally. Okay, so a lot of people see, oh, this is, you know, maybe a Midwest company. They have local routes. In order to actually serve our area, they actually have power plants in New England, so it's local. We're not taking jobs away from Massachusetts workers, and it's mostly a natural gas. We rely very little on coal in the New England region. And the other thing is that Dynage will be purchasing that renewable energy, again, from the gold standard, Mass Energy. Not all renewable energy certificates are equal. I have talked to customers, really, yeah, so with solar panels, they're got 100% renewable energy, but they don't know where that renewable energy is generated. Turns out, it's coming from Oregon or Texas, which, as Larry can explain much better than I can, is actually not reducing our reliance on fossil fuels. So this is a guarantee that it's generated locally, and we're adding new renewable energy to our power grid. Okay, so why is this so important? Why is Brookline a climate action leader? Electricity consumption is the largest source of pollution-causing carbon emissions, and if the community participates in our standard product, Brookline Green, the 25%, you're going to help Brookline displace about 34 million pounds of carbon dioxide emissions annually, and that's the equivalent, just to give it some concrete perspective, of running almost 12 wind turbines. Okay, so that's the ingenious part of the program. If you think about it, if you're spending just $2 more a month, and that's tax deductible, it's hard to believe that you can have that level of impact nationwide of reducing greenhouse gas emissions. Some of the people we've talked to highly praised the program. Frank Caro, who is, as you know, the Director of the Brookline Community Aging Network and a member of the Advisory Committee. He spoke to the very fact, getting all of these solicitations, and he's working with our senior citizens, and this is one of their complaints. I too am working really at the front line at customer service. I will have senior citizens come in clutching bills, not just from one supplier. They've signed up for service they don't need, and they didn't understand what they were getting into, and they were making that decision alone. So this is a really, a real problem that we are addressing by offering this service. Another, again, you know, we think of this being maybe just a little bit more money, but you're able to do something environmentally sound and impactful, and it's really in a budget-conscious way. David Loschinsky is a prime example of this. He's the owner of Eureka Puzzles, and he's also the president of the Coolidge Corner Merchants Association, so it's a small business owner. So he's not able to install solar panels on his house, but he feels the $2 more a month is something he can afford, and he loves the fact that it is tax deductible. So this is, again, a very accessible way to do more, to buy more renewable electricity. One thing that I'm really proud of is that our goal was to design this to be as inclusive as possible. We wanted low-income residents, our seniors, small businesses to have the opportunity. If they wanted to have an opportunity for monthly savings and protections from market volatility, we're not leaving them out. So even though there is this goal of pushing the envelope a little bit, nobody's really left out. There's room for everyone in this program. And I think the one thing that, you know, you really need to consider in terms of perspective, it is a wonderful thing that the state does have this renewable portfolio standard, that 12% of all electricity purchased come from renewable resources, but at that rate, it is not enough. And I just want to point to Dr. Vitolo's comment, that at that rate, we're not going to meet the state's goal of reducing greenhouse gases by 80% by the year 2050. And that's why Brookline is going to get a lot of attention for the work they're doing with this 25% option. A little bit about Dynage. They're one of the nation's largest power companies. They are a financially sound Fortune 200 company. Again, they're generating electricity from New England-based power plants. The majority is from natural gas. They have more aggregation accounts nationwide than other suppliers. And they're also the electricity supplier for the recently launched aggregation programs in Arlington, Somerville, Sudbury, and Winchester. About Mass Energy, again, the gold standard, they are the renewable energy supplier that Dynage is purchasing that energy from. They're a nonprofit, and again, they have been really a trusted voice for consumers and the, for both consumers and the environment on local, state, and national energy issues. And they're going to be supplying Massachusetts Class 1 renewable energy certificates, again, guaranteed to add new renewable energy to our power grid. A few of our resources, certainly this information session, the Selectmen's Climate Action Committee is hosting another information session next week on Monday at 6:30 in this room, and it will be televised. The town's website, BrooklineGreen.com, has a lot of information, frequently asked questions that'll guide you. Mr. Loschinsky is sending out a letter to the community next week. We have information brochures. We're going to put out PSAs on our local cable, BrooklineInteractive.org. And as you can see, we are giving a lot of presentations to community groups, so we're not waiting for you to come to us. We're actually getting on your agenda, and this is a list of meetings that we are giving. I'm actually giving about eight presentations in the next two weeks. And this is something we're really passionate about. We want everyone to feel that they can make use of this really rich, flexible program, and that's why we're happy to come out to you. If you are listening to this, please contact me and the Planning Department so we can arrange to have a presentation at your, maybe it's at your condo or your neighborhood group, your community group. Again, to contact us, you can consult our BrooklineGreen.com. You can get ahold of me through the Planning Department at the numbers and emails above. Dynage is the electricity supplier, and you can call them if you have any questions about the opt-out period or the different programs and what they offer. Of course, to select one of the alternative products in our program. And Eversource remains the utility company. You continue to call them with billing issues and emergency issues. So any questions before we turn it over to Larry?
For customers who are on net metering, which...
Yeah, this won't, this won't affect them. They'll still be able to do that.
Okay.
So obviously, you probably end up selecting the basic program, which is comparable to the Eversource program, since you're already getting your electricity from your solar panels.
Right.
So you don't need electricity from Mass Energy, renewable, because you're already getting your own. So for those people with solar panels, they can sign up for the basic program, which is comparable to Eversource's program, except that they're going to save, beginning in July, going to save $2 a month.
Yep, so in short, you can still participate in the program.
Yeah, but why would I go down?
Yeah, I just wanted to, I just wanted to point out, I had a family come in. They have solar panels, and they purchased 100% renewable. So the choice is yours about where you want the energy you use that the solar panels don't supply. If you want it to come from, again, it's your choice. If you want it to come from renewable, it doesn't have to be basic. It's really, where do you want your electricity to come from?
Right, okay. Any questions from the Board?
All right, so Mr. Creashen?
Thank you very much for having me. I'm Larry Creashen, Executive Director of the Massachusetts Energy Consumers Alliance. We are a fairly local nonprofit. Our office is in Jamaica Plain, a couple miles away. Jaime Roldan is with me. She's actually even more local. She lives in Brookline and rode her bike here. And she is actually the person in charge of helping me secure the supply to serve your needs, so we're kind of proud of that. Our organization is now 35 years old, and we're here to make energy more affordable and environmentally sustainable, and we just couldn't be more thrilled with the leadership that you've taken here. We were so happy to work with Good Energy to do the program in Melrose, and Dedham went first. Now, there's a number of communities who are doing that, and they've kind of targeted that 5% renewable energy above that required by state law, but we're kind of 25%. And that's amazing. To put it in context, and Tommy mentioned it in his comments, Massachusetts law, it's called the Renewable Portfolio Standard, requires national grid and Eversource and competitive power suppliers to have increasing amounts of energy coming in the form of renewables. But in Class 1, we're talking wind, solar power, interruct digestion, landfill gas, and certain qualifying hydro facilities. And it goes up 1% per year, and at that rate, we'll never get to Paris. And so we're advocating for an increase in, by law, to go at least 2% or 3% in order to get to the 80% by 2050. So to put it in a nutshell, people in Brookline are going to be 25 years ahead of state law, and that's something to be very proud of. And that's really the main purpose of this. This is a voluntary contribution that people are making. They're given the opt-out. They're given the opt-out opportunity. And so your community is making a choice, like so many individuals have made the choice. If, over 250, I think it's 260 people in Brookline are choosing to, to buy 100% renewable energy from Mass Energy. And because Eversource hasn't allowed us to accommodate it on their electricity bill, they're actually having it done on their credit card. And, and we think that's incredibly commendable. It puts renewable energy onto the grid nonetheless. This is just so much simpler and more, more elegant and more effective when we can move the entire community to, to 25% at least, or maybe 100%. So given the numbers, we don't know exactly until we, until people start getting into the program. But we're estimating that, you know, this is going to cause the purchase of 11 or 12 or more, the production equivalent to 11 or 12 wind turbines, as Marie indicated. That's a pretty significant decision by the community. So we, over the many years, we build up a portfolio. We buy renewable energy wholesale, and we sell it retail to consumers who want to be green. So we have long-term contracts with projects in Gloucester, Situate, Plymouth, Worcester, Charlemont, Western Massachusetts, Hull, both wind turbines, Ipswich, Coventry, Rhode Island. We're focused on projects that change the character of the New England power grid. All six New England states feed into the same grid, and so right now, the power serving Brookline could come from a fossil plant or a wind plant in any one of the six states. And so we're focused on trying to change that character. So we're going to buy as close to Brookline as we possibly can. We're going to see what the market allows in, in that sense. We may have to buy from Maine or New Hampshire, but we're, we're really focused. Every day, we're looking, we're talking to generators about buying their renewable energy to meet, to meet the needs. And the point is, when all these other communities try to follow suit, that just makes us go out and shop for more. And that, that's really the hokey pokey, as I put it. That's what it's all about, which is, more people demand renewable energy, more projects will be built. And so it's good news if we end up having to scurry to find more supply, right? That means it's sending a signal to the marketplace for people to put up more wind turbines and solar panels and to collect more manure from cows so they can make anaerobic digestion and all that kind of good stuff. So we're very happy to be working with you, and we hope this is the beginning of a long-term change in the way that power is bought and sold in Massachusetts. Can you answer any questions?
Are you buying from the New Block Island wind farm?
Not yet. You know, honestly, that is a fabulous project. National Grid has kind of purchased from that. And that's a, a great, that's a great project for New England. It's actually a little bit more expensive than what we will be bringing to Brookline when you go offshore. But offshore wind is necessary to meet our climate goals. And so it could be, come a day when, and it could be part of the mix, offshore wind, Massachusetts or Rhode Island, could be part of the mix in, in Brookline. But certainly, another way of looking at it is, we play keep-away. When, when we buy from all the projects that I just listed, that we do, that means that Eversource, National Grid, and other suppliers will have to go find other sources. So maybe they will bring more offshore wind into the mix as well. So essentially, what you're doing is you're taking state law and you're going beyond, above and, above and beyond the call of duty. And that requires more output from projects all over the place.
Are there other communities who've structured the way we have 25, 25 as kind of the default, and then with a 100 option?
The model that we have gone with is a number of communities Good Energy represents, such as Somerville and Arlington, Winchester, and Sudbury. In addition to Melrose and Dedham, they're, they're doing 5%.
Wow.
And now there are a number of communities who are looking at it. You know, Gloucester, I think, will be there, and many other communities. I frequently go out to places like Northampton and Amherst where they're looking at it. Usually, we're talking at least 5%. But when, when, when people are told Brookline's doing 25%, then they begin to think bigger numbers. So you may have some, some people following you, but, and I hope, I hope they do, but you can be proud of where you are.
Wow, so that's, that's a headline.
Yeah.
Wow.
Well, let me just say that Brookline, we followed the town meeting resolution, which was co-authored by Tommy Vitolo and Carol Oldham in November of 2015, which called for the 25% program. And the Climate Action Committee Subcommittee looked at it and said, well, there are a number of people in Brookline who want to purchase 100%. And so we put that option into the program. And then there are a number of people who feel that they need to stay with the small, as Maria calls it, I call it the little, which is comparable to Eversource. But we can save the money by doing the basic plan. So we have something for everyone in, in the marketplace. And I think that that's a very important part of the program. And our 25% and our 100% options are unique.
Yeah. And I also, we enjoy working with Climate Action Brookline and others out front and others, who are trying to explain to people about that 100% option. That doesn't come naturally, and that comes with some encouragement and prodding, and we're, we're getting there. And so that, maybe we'll go for 13 or 14 wind turbines with that kind of effort.
It just, for those who don't know, offshore, off the shore of Block Island was the first, is the first wind farm on the east coast of the United States. And folks down there are very excited. I actually have property that can see that. And it's, it's quite a beautiful sight.
That's good to hear. That's, wasn't the case in, with the Keep Wind project.
Yeah, well, any other questions?
I'd like to just follow up, because first of all, I want to thank Larry and Maria for this presentation. I also want to thank Maria for all of the hard work she's done. Excuse me. This has been many, many months of planning and talking and working through the books and working with Good Energy and presenting to the state. It's, it's been a, a long process, but I think we've come out with an excellent program that has three different products. Again, I, the, there are a couple of other people on the Subcommittee, the Aggregation Subcommittee, who aren't here. That's Kathleen Scanlon and Ed Lescoye, Ed Leckler from Town Meeting Member Precinct Aid also came to a number of meetings and was very helpful.
David Lescoye?
David Lescoye is here.
Oh, he's here? Oh, okay.
He's on, yes, he was on the committee, and Werner was the chair with David and Kathleen and Alan Levitong, who's, I don't think Alan's here either. So I want to thank them for all their hard work. I would like to reiterate, because this has been somewhat of an issue on email chatter, and that is to reiterate what Maria said about the opt-out period. The opt-out period is a state-created consumer protection item, essentially. You have 30 days to opt out if you don't like the program. If you do like the program, you can opt up or opt down, but you could also opt out. The negative about opting out is that you do lose the rate stability that you would get if you enter our program, and, and you would not be able to capture the savings. You're not guaranteed that, if you decided you made a mistake and you had buyer's remorse, then you couldn't come back into the program with a guarantee of the lower rate that, that everyone else is enjoying. So I think it's very important to think about that if you're going to opt out. And there is no penalty for opting out in the future, so if you want to try it and see whether it suits you, that may be your best recourse, because you can opt out with no, no penalty at all at a later date. Again, I, I think this is a terrific program. I think we are setting a gold standard along with Mass Energy. And I'm very pleased that we're going to add to our, our capability of fighting carbon emissions from, from the town of Brookline. And that's what this program was originally designed to do.
Selectman Green?
I'd like to make an observation about the way the program's structured, and I compliment you for the structure. Unfortunately, in this country, there's a tendency to try to characterize climate interests and climate needs as hostile to the financial interest of working people and many, and many other people in this country. I think one thing that this structure does is to recognize that maybe some, some people would want to opt out of the additional costs, small though it may be, of, of the Brookline Green or the Brookline All Green program. And to maintain, you know, in the Brookline Basic where they will actually earn some savings over whatever Source currently charges. That's a little thing, and, and, you know, those of us concerned about climate issues, you know, would not see, you know, an additional .7 cents as that significant. But from the standpoint of how the whole energy-climate argument is presented in this country, I think it's always important to make sure that we are aware of the fact that .7% for some people, you know, can be, can be a significant amount of money. And giving them an opportunity to, you know, not pay that while still benefiting from the state renewable energy amount, I think is, is good politically. And long-term, what's good politically is good from the standpoint of climate, because, you know, the, the solution to the climate issue is not, you know, the logic of it, but rather the politics of it, in my opinion.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for that. Great presentation.
Yeah.